Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, it's six o'clock. We have a forum. And Richard hopefully is on his way.
He may be on, he may join you.
Anyway, COVID being to order on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the town hall. This is, this 2-2-2-2-2 is not going to happen for another 200 years.
Hundred years.
That's what they said. I have 200 years to say.
Every hundred years it happens.
Does it? It's like 200. Maybe I heard it wrong, but anyways.
Oh, that happened both times.
I guess. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes, we have the minutes, one minute, one minutes today, and we have a February 7th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, somebody make a motion to accept?
Tell me.
Any discussion? If not, all the favor, including the minutes of Mother's, February 7th, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, highway report, Danny, you're on.
So you get the FEMA, that's the recovery. So we haven't had a meeting in the last two weeks. Monday was a holiday, Bill was off with him Monday before. And we've really just let Michelle get all the paperwork arranged. I was in the office last week with her for three, four hours. Hopefully this come in Monday and we, um, we can have Katie come down for a live meeting. Because, yep, we're pretty close on all the paperwork. So once, there's a few things you'd like to look at because of the stockpiles that we created and how we're taking out of them. Go over that with her and then I don't think it'll be very long. Then pretty much everything will be ready to go to her for all roads, everything. So that's what I got on that. Oh, also on that, the, I talked to, John came to me last week there about the H&amp;H on Ledger. So I did call, I talked to Ron Bell. He will give us a price. I think he must have wrote my email down wrong because he never sent it. But I didn't worry about getting back with him. They wanted to check with Katie from FEMA about if we went that route to hire a private contractor to do the H&amp;H study to make sure that we weren't just receiving prices and it'd be wrong. And all we had to do is follow our protocol, which is anything under $5,000, you don't have to put up a bid. They're talking somewhere between like $600 and $800 if you hire it done. Megan Brum in state, I talked to her a week ago and she actually called me back this morning. And the ones that do the hydraulic study have not called her. She says she does not believe they have even started on. She says she's called in and, you know, she called them last week and has not heard nothing from them. So I don't know if that's something you guys want to do. Do you, I mean, this is what John brought up. So do you want to get a price from Ron Bell? He is the engineer that did a lot of the stuff there in Irene or Renault. So I think he still works for Renault doing stuff. But he did a lot of stuff for us there in Irene. He's an engineer, he would go up and he says he does like a little plot math of the area. And then he talks to Scott Jensen, deals with all that, and will come up with the hydraulic study.
We had to get it done and FEMA will pay for that, so.
So, oh yeah, that's.
Is there somebody who wants to get on? Oh yes.
So if that's something you want.
And we want, what's the downside of getting a bid?
We don't need a bid, we can just get a price because it's under like that.
What is the downside?
You know, it sounded like he said he could get on pretty quick. So I would think that maybe within a month we'd have it done. We, I would just let Megan know that, tell the state that we're just going to go help source this so that they're not, nothing's overlapping. But if that's something that the board is interested in, I will call him back tomorrow and he can send a proposal and I'll just tell him if it's, you know, if it's that between that $600 and $800, I'm just telling them to get us on the schedule and get them on.
Have you already checked with Katie Sullivan?
I asked her about it and she just sent me an email back and said that you just got to follow your procurement policy, which is underfired. So that's all she said.
And then they just refreshed my memory. This is for the ledge.
Ledge Road, the Class 4 section where it took out the big covert. So we need a hydraulic study to determine what size is going to go back in there. And we don't really want to wait till almost the end of the time and have to file for extensions and all that.
I just want to add to what he said about Ron Bell. He's the one that when we get a contractor who wins the bid, they often hire him to do the, to set the exact plot of where it goes to satisfy the requirements of Scott Jensen. So, and he's done most of those. He's really good. I think we should do it.
I will follow up.
Let's make a motion to do it. So we have for the record.
I'm going to take, we hire Ron Bell to do the hydraulic study for the ledge road, called the covert.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
May I ask just one more question? Danny, this study for the ledge road covert, is that part of the package that will ultimately go to Katie? The FEMA project? Is that what you're still asking?
That is what we will use to prepare a bid for the covert. She will get a copy of the invoice so that we get reimbursed. If I were to stay, you know, maybe that project is done. I don't know how it will, you know, how they're, they might wait until we get to do the project and get the $700 or whatever it costs. I don't know.
I agree with that.
No, so, but it's, it's the first step that has to be taken to do this whole project.
Okay.
It's the same in any big covert, we have to do it. So I will call him to do that. I had hired Ivor Stevens, Jamie Gregory, P&amp;L Wilson and Lawrence last week because of the warming, the graphic file was about five G for Austin. So they hauled last week to three days, couple more three days, to a couple more three days. Some inch and a half plant mix in because of the way the roads were starting to turn. If I be, between trucking and the material and everything, we buy about $15,000 for the three days. But we have a pile up there. Hopefully ours does have more too. They had that done.
That's the next week. Yeah, Bill. The only one of those. No, it's two of them. Oh, I need from Palmer and I need from Wilson and Lawrence. Tell them I'm going to send, or I'll send the paperwork, but you make sure they fill it out on the non, on the non-employee hired agreement and their COI for this year. I think I haven't heard some of them.
Yeah, they're just sending, they're filling it out.
Yeah, okay. And the reason for this was?
Just, we needed material. Our trucks haul too. Except for one day we went and did some other stuff, just to add material for my season.
Thank you.
So I have that under other HB Plumbing Heating Electric from Springfield. The other one that came down, looked at the shop for the fan and they, the electrician Doug Perry found that the carbon monoxide remote transmitters, there's three of them in the building. They're only good for five years and then they have to be replaced. He submitted a quote to have that done. To replace the three. It comes to $2,654 to replace them. They must be expensive little things. They do pick up all the carbon monoxide and keep what they were in here. So I have that here. Doug, did you get to print one off, Bill? Did you print one off of these?
No, I didn't find it.
Okay, my printer just didn't print their logo out because it was colored, not any kind of color. So if that's something that you guys want to sign, they will do that. We have $2,000 left in the building maintenance right now. But we always, we will be getting a bill for the Champion overhead door because they've just taken service, the doors. Every two years I have the door service.
Danny, are these things are going to put in? Does it have more than five year warranty on?
Yeah, that's all the reason for.
Yep. I found out in my house that my carbon monoxide things, they were going off. They're only good for five years.
Yeah.
They're dated and you have to change them.
Yeah.
Whatever, so.
Something to do with the sensor, it's way exhausted, the reading. They've been really good. I haven't seen a bill for all the other stuff they come to do with the fan. They've been timely. He's come down two or three times and researched everything for this. I mean, they've been good to us so far.
I don't think you have a choice, you have to replace them.
Well, I mean, you can put it out to bid.
Yeah, that will be the only issue if they want to bid it out.
But it's $2,654. If you guys are willing to have them do that work, you could sign this paper and then they could, they got to have a half of it upfront and then they do the work and then bill the other half.
I think we should go and do it.
I don't think you have a choice.
Yeah.
I mean, anyway, if you don't pass the OSHA and all the listings.
Yeah, I mean, if we get an inspection, they're going to write us up on that.
Who's supposed to sign this?
Who wants to?
You need a motion and authorize you.
Yeah, you want to make a motion and authorize me to sign this thing then. For $2,654 to HB, right?
Yeah.
HB, something like that.
My second.
Any other discussion? All the favors say aye?
Thanks for taking care of all that stuff.
Yeah, he did his, he looked it all up. He's going to call it that. They're going to apply your life on it.
Danny, you want this back or you want to?
Uh, no, we're quite, have to give it to Kim and Michelle.
Okay, so this.
For them, yeah.
They want 50% deposit, is that what they want?
Yeah, I told you on that page over the deposit stuff.
Okay. So to, we gave Kim a deposit?
Yeah.
John, do you want to have a quick pen and pencil to grab?
I don't think so. It's just part of the radio. They're making a review of highway, aren't they?
It's a, sorry. Oh, no, sorry, truck bids. Truck number two is the one that is up this year for replacement. I have a set of specs on a truck. Um, Bill and I would have to just sit down and sift the graphs and stuff in the first part with the bidding for and everything and to submit that in. It'd be a while before any money goes out where, you know, we get a bid back and then go from there on that. Mind you guys are good.
Well, you should do it because Friday, you're not going to wait a long time for a job.
We, we are on the list, there will be a VIN number on the bid from ATG so that you actually are already, they're showing you the truck has already been set. We're being the first, the second quarter of the trucks that will be coming in. He's already put us on it. All the town, all our town trucks from one town to the next, it's just the color. That's what's different about them. So they don't, like he said, we put our name on it and we do the bid and we say no. He's just going to sell it to the next town. So nothing is, you know, we don't have anything odd about the way we set our trucks up. So he didn't mind with our name on the truck. You will be bidding truck and body together this time. We've already done it in two parts. There's essentially only one body company left in the area. The other ones have all pretty much left and they're about 10 grand higher. So they don't even want to bid if it comes down to a dollar amount on your bids. So.
Bill, you have something?
Please don't.
I'm done.
I have weight permits. Okay, okay. Fabian Earth Moving, Bear Trucking, Renault Brothers Inc. and Makolov Pressing Inc. Well, we need a motion to, to accept.
To allow me to issue the permit?
No, Bill, to sign it, it's. Second?
Second.
I don't think there's any discussion. If there is, anybody have any questions? Not, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Danny, I know one thing. Well, Nelson King used to move.
Yeah.
What's that, there's a pole I'm going across right there.
It's just the way the frost is.
I never seen.
Me either. But there's a couple of places this year on the Blacktop that, just before the Cheese Company. That, I've never seen that, that covert out there. We put that in 12, 13 years ago or longer. I've never seen a frost like, move like that.
I hope you're lucky about the careful.
Oh, you want to be careful. We did start today on stage of trees. Section, we did go 300 foot strip today.
Okay, if they're telling you more, Danny. The next is the liquid licenses, that's the only thing that's on the collecting treasure. Yeah, I have, I have, Bill has the licenses, there are three, I think. There are, well, there are three for the market. Each one of these places where there's a green tab, there's places for by people to sign. You need to sign each one of them. So you need first to approve them all by a motion. It's for the interior and the restaurant for MKT. And again, sign it everywhere there's a green tag. And then for the. Sorry, the dollar. Yeah, let, let Bill finish. And then for the inn. You have the hotel, the restaurant. Uh, the, oh, the restaurant in the, in the. Farm, the restaurant in the building. Oh, they serve over here sometimes. And. And the north and east horses of the tavern. But again, on each one of those, wherever there's green, you can sign. Well, let's do the, let's do the motion separately because Suzanne, you have to, you can't, you have to recede yourself on the foundation.
No, I don't think so. I think I have objectivity about signing the liberal licenses.
No, you can't. Not, not for the foundation. I don't, don't believe. That could be wrong, but. Well, it's up to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if not. Okay, so you have, you, the motion should say for the inn. Those five, just the five locations for the inn and the three locations for the market. And then sign, again, sign all of them. And then where it says clerk, that's for Kim. That's not for the clerk of the board, that's for Kim. Right, so you have the motion down, so all we need is, you know, to do with them here. Yeah. Okay, so all we need is a second. So anyone want to second it?
Who made the motion?
Uh, who's going to make the motion? Okay, John, who's going to second it? Okay, Kathy will second it.
And that will be both motions, John?
Yes. Okay, Kathy, both motions?
Yes.
Okay, right. So all the favors of the, of the two motions, for the MKT and for the tavern, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next item is the planning commission. And we have a, a letter.
You have the planning, you have an email?
Yeah, we have an email from Chris Wallace saying that Margot Matt would like to be on the planning commission. So it's up to us to approve her. Do you have anything to say? Eric?
I, I think she's a very good candidate. First crew member when she was working on her cleanup project. Did her fine job, so we agreed that she be one.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve Margot Matt to serve under a planning commission?
Some.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Eric, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, so all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good, we got a new member. Now, this term ends 2023. Okay. Because she's fulfilling a term. Because she's still. All righty. Okay.
You can go ahead.
This is. Yeah, I'll go. Committee reports next. Secretary can have nothing new. Highway, anything new on the highway?
I have something to report, Mr. Chairman. Let me just keep the process moving here. Do you signature this?
Well, the signatures are, you can wait on that to say anything else. There's no, there's no quick rush.
Okay. So with respect to the highway committee, I just wanted to let everybody know that as, as we mentioned in the last meeting, the right of way plans for the Walker Bridge have been completed. They've now been sent to the negotiators. There are letters to property owners that will be sent out by the end of March. And there was one negotiation that has already taken place and successfully so between Mark Rushton and Ivor and Mark and. Mark Rushton and Stevens Grounds Maintenance about allowing Ivor's trucks to turn in the Rushton's driveway during the bridge construction. And they have agreed to do that. There may be some signage required. We'll deal with that when it comes to it. But I just wanted to acknowledge the good citizenship of Mark and Ivor and Amber and Sue to agree to do this on behalf of the town.
Okay. The Parks Committee, I don't know if everybody knows, but they did not get the grant. Unfortunately, it was given to, most of the grants were given to the northern part of the block.
Yeah.
So as usual, we always get the bad end of the stick. So it's a shame, but it happens.
Yes, so I don't know what's that mean?
What?
It's probably.
You don't get the grant?
Right, but, so.
So they can't do what they want to do. You know, they were going to do the pavilion and the porta potties and all of the trail work and all that kind of stuff, so.
They're going to refurbish a lot of the terrain.
So that, you know, there'll be money from the logging.
Yeah.
That's up to the board, how do you want to spend that money? But originally they were looking for the grant. So the grant is going to exceed any money that the town would put into it and use their budget.
Good.
Yeah, Bill.
The logging is proceeding. We've gotten about 15, a little less than 15,000. Part of that is, is what we need to get back and part of it's the deposit that, that is, is that they leave the property, they have to get back to them. There'll be a little bit more than, than the approximately 15,000 that we were to make off it. Just a little bit more because there are more trees being taken. Because as, as it opens up, Tim's finding, Tim Morton, the forester, is finding problem trees. And they're taking out the problem trees so we don't later have to hire a marverist to come in and take out all the tree that they could take. Like they're logging off the Japan, turning into wood so that we get some better wood. They were going to, I mean, Rob Hall wanted them to cut right to the property line. But when Tim Morton went up there, he realized why they had not planned to do that in the first place. And that's because it's too wet. So there won't be a big increase in the amount of wood taken over, projected. But there might be a little bit more, and if there's a little bit more, we'll get a little bit more money. So that's, that explains today.
Yeah, personnel committee. Suzanne, just as a matter of, I can't print the stuff that gets sent to me from you. For some reason or other, it doesn't print. So I have to go down to the town. So I don't know what program you're using, but if I have, I can't print.
Oh, no, I have no, I have no explanation for that. Can you tell me all of it?
Well, the only, the only way I can print it is, okay, when you entitle it with the date, you use dashes between the numbers. My, Microsoft will not take the dashes. I have to change that to just simply, for instance, the one's nine, 0222, 2022, with nothing in between or a period in between. Because if I try to print it with those dashes in between, if I print, I can't save it, I can't do it. I have to change it to the right format.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you, are you having that same problem?
Yeah, I can't.
Interesting, you have an apple.
Yeah, but it doesn't make, just make any difference.
And I have an apple also.
But it doesn't make any difference because I can print everything else that I get from, from the town or anybody else. So as long as it's in Microsoft Word.
My documents?
I think so, but if I download it, then I can print it.
All right, so I'm really glad that you pointed this out and I'm sorry for the inconvenience.
It's okay.
I will, I will send some test documents and I'll try the recommendation that Bill made. Title into documents differently, maybe even sending them in PDF. But, and I'll just send a test so that we can figure that out.
Okay. All right, I'm not sure why we're approving all these things because I thought we approved all this stuff. But go ahead, Suzanne.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we had two requests for relooking at the job descriptions. And they were from Mike and Dave. And we reviewed these with Danny, of course, as well. The Assistant Road Foreman job description. When we originally talked about writing this job description, we talked about separating the short-term responsibilities from the longer-term responsibilities. In other words, Danny's going to be out for a long term versus if Danny's going to be out for a short term. And it was my mistake not to include that distinction in the original job description. So to answer Joe's question, the reason why we're reconsidering this one tonight is to correct that problem. So you'll see in the first paragraph of the revised job description that that talks about the short-term responsibilities. And then in the second paragraph, it talks about the long term. And in the event of a long-term absence by Danny, we would have to reconsider that as a select board. Danny were available and could help us out or Mike. So that is the change that is made in this particular job description. And then the only change that Dave requested was for the title to be truck operator and not equipment truck operator. And we agreed to that because the job description itself contains the expectation to operate and run all highway equipment, machinery and equipment. So the only thing that changed is the title, not the expectation. Right, Danny?
Yep.
So those are the two changes.
So it still states that yes, you know, it's going to run all the equipment. It just says, it's just not a title like this.
Sure, it's not the title, it's, it's the expectation. So the other suggestion that they made was to put a place at the bottom to date and sign it. And so the very next step is to have a motion by the select board to approve these two job descriptions. And with that, I will take the draft off and give the, and give these to Bill, to Danny so that Danny can have Mike and Dave sign them and then give them to Bill for filing.
All right, Kathy.
So I'll make a motion.
Somebody make a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, I don't think we need any discussion, so all the favors say aye? Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And the next item is just following through on the requirements. And the next item is just following through on the requirements of the personnel policy. The first one is Addendum B. This is an agreement that is signed by Kim as an independently elected officer, that she will be bound by certain aspects of the personnel policy, and that includes the agreements process. And in her Addendum B, it requires signatures by all the select board members, so I'm going to pass that around now. For your signature. And then while that's going around, I'll mention that the other follow-through item is Addendum A, and we just need to agree on a process for having each one of the employees receive a copy of the approved and signed personnel policy. And then they, when they receive the copy, acknowledge it by signing Addendum A. And then this Addendum A gets filed in their personnel folder in order to verify that they have a copy of the personnel policy. So Bill, I think this might be something easily done by you. Is that the way it should happen?
Yes, that's, that's.
Okay. So we'll just, I don't even think we need to.
I don't think we need to.
We'll just say that Bill will take care of Addendum A for the employees.
Which way should I have or this way?
You, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then the final follow-through item is that we agreed as a select board that as a term of our agreements process, that each select board member will undergo online anti-arrestment training. And this would, could also possibly apply to both Bill and Danny as key officials in the town who interact with our employees. So if you'd like, we can ask Bill to administer the Passive Learn, which is a free online course platform that is offered by Passive, obviously, and has select online anti-arrestment training programs that you can sign up for. And then we'll also track who's taken these courses. So this is a commitment we made, and just wanted to make everyone aware.
Pretty standard these days. Pretty standard these days to have, you know.
What you're saying, Bill, Bill will, will deal with passive and then he'll.
Deal with passive. That's okay with you, Bill. It seems like the best.
Is that okay, Bill?
And within your job description about the HR, the HR piece.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kathy, the building, or whoever's going to do the buildings?
I think the engineers came the Thursday, moved the water pump downstairs.
I don't think, I don't think they actually did work. I talked to Kim today.
He hasn't, he hasn't been, he hadn't been back since.
Oh, he hasn't been back.
Since you and I met. He's coming tomorrow.
All right.
To meet with Mike Rodriguez to open and close, open the ceiling and the floor, and go over exactly what he wants Mike to do. And we have from Mike his non-employment agreement and all that other stuff, but he needs to go to the job with him. He's meeting with Tony from James &amp; James to go over moving the heater downstairs and, and changing the piping here to somehow loop around or under, or whatever he wants him to do, the elevator, because that, that water bypass is a continual loop, so it's, it's got to be fixed there before, before we put the elevator in. So he's coming to meet with both of those.
Is that the Thursday email that I got? It said Thursday on it. The day.
He's coming tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And he's going to be here at noon and twelve-thirty. Okay. And then we don't have, we're hoping to have, I tried to get an answer from an electrician who was tasked.
Lawrence and Lourdes, I think, is.
Well, if they will say yes. I didn't even want to mention because they didn't say yes.
Well, those are the ones we asked, anything we do.
Asking if they would come in, because they know the building, and if they would come in and if they would give us an idea of what it would cost to, to raise our average from one hundred to two hundred. We're right on the edge of needing it anyway for the heat pumps. This is the first one, and you can see it, I'll talk about that in a second. For the heat pumps, in any case, but certainly we're going to need it with the elevator. The elevator doesn't draw that much, but it's, we're right on the edge, so we need a two-hundred amps service anyway. And we need to get that done. We'd like to see that done separate from the contract, and depending on that cost, whether or not we have to bid it out or bring it back to you for a special meeting with regard to that. It's hard to find anybody who isn't busy, and we, and if we're going to do the elevator before the summer, then we need to have the electrical done right away. And if there's any.
And the electrician that we, that I recommended for Warren, he just can't do it. It's a complicated job, because you have to dig up outside to get into the conduits, and you've got a situation with a generator on this side, so he, he just didn't have the horsepower to do it. And I'm assuming that, you know, he's a small guy, so maybe Lawrence and Lourdes, who's a big company, do it. But it's not a simple thing of just putting up a new panel. It's quite involved. So we'll see what they say.
So that's the deal, so they meet, the two, the contractor and the, and the plumbing meet tomorrow, and then we hope to have an electrician by next week, who will then have to meet with Chris Cole at some other time. We have all the plans for all the wiring, the underground wiring, and so whatever, so they can understand that, and they can see what the job, that needs to be done, but whatever he gives them. As we thought, Brent just got the one, he put that in, and he is, when he comes back in a couple of weeks, he will put the second one in, in the post office, and hopefully he will remove the heater, the, the heat pump that's right outside my office downstairs, and store it until that wall is gone in the construction, and then there'll be a straight wall from my door, will straight across the hallway, the closet will be gone, and the heat pump will go back there when all that is completed. But he'll get rid of that. And I think that's all we have on.
Okay. There's nothing on the wastewater. And that can be some, but.
Oh, here, wait a second, let me think.
But I know, unless you're holding out.
There is something. I just, I had a bunch of things come today, and it was one of the ones I red flagged to go back to, and I'll do it, get, do it tomorrow. There, it's not a big thing. They've approved our ninety-two thousand, whatever that was, seven ninety-two, right? Ninety-two thousand, they approved it, subject to the paperwork getting done by the state. And then they need three things from us, which are just the same things we get from contractors, and that is a certificate of insurance and two other, it's proprietary stuff. And I have to get, I'll have that too tomorrow. So, so that's all moving on.
That's good news that it got through.
Well, that, yeah, that is good news.
And that'll do, yeah, that'll be really good.
So that's, that's the ninety-two thousand for the engineering study that's been approved.
Yes.
Excellent.
So that's great news.
Yeah.
Okay, and any other business?
So I have a couple of questions about the pre-town meeting. I noticed on the agenda there would be a candidates forum.
Yeah.
Who are the candidates?
Well, okay, timeout, timeout. The candidates have already said to me, why are we doing anything? Because there isn't anybody running against it.
Well, and I've gotten a couple of inquiries from, from our voters about who the candidates are. They can't seem to find it in our.
Well, I.
I don't see a step for anyone to go ahead and run as a candidate.
Aren't the, aren't the, didn't everything out on the bulletin board?
Or could be on the bulletin board, people just don't have a town.
And I don't know.
So who are the candidates? Are they Rich and.
John and Rich.
Are there any other?
From the board?
Are there any other offices?
And likely going to be no form.
Yeah, every, every, there's a list, there's a candidate, the, the. The auditors have a candidate, I don't know who they all are, but there's only, nobody's running against anybody, so.
Where can one obtain a list of the candidates who are running for office?
Well, then you need to ask the clerk.
They're at the top clerk, that's what they.
Is Kim on the line? This Kim on the line?
No.
She's not on the.
No, you can tell. No, she is not. What I can do tomorrow is I'll post it on the web, but it's.
That would be great.
I'll go get the bulletin board right out on.
We are, but people aren't necessarily to town. I think if you would post it on the web, that would be just perfect.
And it may already be on there.
I looked, and I couldn't find it, but maybe you're right. Well, if, if, if we, if you could just post it on the, on the web so that everybody could take a look at who's running for what office.
Okay, let me just say why it says candidates forum. Because there is a candidates forum. People have the right to, even if there's no one running, have a people to say, John, why are you running? If John isn't in the room, he can't answer. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. But if I didn't put it on, I get criticism, why didn't you put on the candidates? And it's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, honestly, I think what would make the need is exactly what you suggested, is to just put all the people, all the candidates who are running for what office.
Okay, well, I'll do, I'll do better than that. And then on my Grafton Residence email, I'll send it out there.
Oh, there you go.
They can send it to whoever they want.
Pretty much, you have to know, you have to find it.
But she probably has, probably has.
Unfortunately, she did.
Yeah, she's got to have all of them.
You have another one?
Yes. So I also noticed that on the, I think on the agenda, it said, it said that there would be an organization meeting on March first following the election.
Right.
And that it can, it's going to be held in-person only. I believe it said that it's going to be held in-person only.
I, probably said that because we're all going to meet.
We're going to town votes anyway.
Okay, so I'm just, is it, that's what I wanted to refresh my memory about. Is it a public meeting, the organization meeting?
It's, yes, it is, but we've always just had it whoever's.
Whoever will sit. So the reason I bringing this up is because, and I know the times are topsy-turvy, and there are a lot of different ideas about this, but we did vote not to have an in-person town meeting. So now I'm wondering if we should even have, if we should have an option for joining the organization meeting since it is a public meeting? If we should at least offer the option of an electronic means of joining that meeting in order for it to be completely public?
That would be really nice. Can you tell me when it's going to happen?
No.
Exactly. And that's why we don't have a public meeting. And I could say at sometime between seven o'clock and midnight, we will have this meeting. So are they going to sit there and look at their cameras?
The only reason, no one's, that, no one comes. All the, all the.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
All it's for is.
But I don't think we should prejudge who would want to come to the meeting.
But there's, but there's.
But I take your point about the practical matter of not being able to.
Suzanne, this would, this would be my seventh, eighteenth time since I don't have to run. We've always done it this way, ever, ever since we started back in the nineties. After the town meeting, you have a pre-town, you have the organizational meeting, and you go.
And I'm not arguing with that.
No, that's, that's always been that.
It's always been that way, and may I say, just kind of like I, may I say, during the pandemic, and for this particular meeting, we voted not to have an in-person meeting. My question was all about, should we give people the option of joining electronically instead of not having an in-person meeting?
We could.
And I take your point.
Okay, I can.
I take your point.
We could come up.
That we don't have a way to let people.
When we're done counting, when we're done counting, we can come up, we're going to probably come up here.
Yeah, probably.
We'll just sit around here, turn the damn thing on, and let, let people listen. But there isn't really anything public about, about that meeting. Zero, except the results of, of the, of the organization. That's all we think.
That's it.
Right, but it is a public meeting.
Well, of course, it's for me to judge.
But if anybody wants to come, they welcome to come.
Yes. So I like, if, if we could just go along with Bill's idea that whenever we decide to meet, we'll just turn on the computer, and if anybody wants to join, they can.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
That letter I sent out, I don't need a formal thing, I just didn't want to publish that in the, in the Grafton News, saying that on behalf of the select board, unless you guys say that, it's okay.
It's okay, brother.
I, I would prefer that it come from you as a private citizen.
Private citizen, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll do it.
It's, it's a fine letter, and you're bringing up a very, very good point, Bill. In fact, I think it's something we should put on a future select board agenda to talk about the volunteer issue in our town. I, I think it could go on the March seventh agenda, actually.
Something that happened today.
But for this time, since we hardly had a chance to.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just sign it for myself. And what I would suggest with regard to that is that, because that doesn't come out until right at the beginning of March, you have two meetings in March, I would suggest that you do all your appointments the second meeting, if that's okay with everybody. So that would be around the twenty-first. Would be the twenty-first.
That's better.
Would you say that again? I didn't.
Only appointments, only appointments, don't delete appointments. For all the annual things that we have to do at the first meeting, which would be March seventh, I think.
Yeah.
But do it at the September meeting, which would be sometime, sometime in the twentieth, because it gives us a little more time to get some volunteers and get the word out.
And I can change that letter to say that it will be, they have until the Thursday before that meeting to volunteer.
Yeah.
You know, since we're, since we've agreed that Bill will send this letter out as a private citizen, would, Joe, would you be willing to say in your board report in the Grafton News that we will be making the appointments on March twentieth, and give people an opportunity to volunteer and encourage volunteerism? I think that would be appropriate to announce that date.
What is it?
If you're uncomfortable with that.
What is it then, like for the Grafton News?
Right.
Right.
And you want, you want to make an approach on the volunteer issue?
Just say, I think what we just agreed is that in the March fourteen, twenty-first meeting, or that'd be the twenty-first, March twenty-first meeting is when we're going to make the appointments, and we're encouraging volunteers to sign up.
All right, okay. I'll do that. Anything else? Okay, I want, I want to remind everybody that we need to be here at six o'clock on Thursday for the pre-town meeting. Anybody's going to show up, is another story.
Five thirty.
I mean, five thirty, sorry, five thirty. And, and also that we all need to be here after March, on March first for the town. Those are the two things we need to do. Do we have any public comment today? If not, the next regular meeting is March seventh, here at six PM. And maybe, maybe it'll be a special organization meeting, which will be on March first, which is impressive. A multiple to Joe?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good week, and we'll see you here on Thursday night.